All this meeting to order. Uh, we have an... We have, we have a need to go into executive session to discuss contractual and employment matters. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
It's a second.
Second.
And a discussion. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, pose. Okay, alright. Motion passed, we will go into section. Room eight.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah, my man. Father Luke.
I would've voted yes.
I'm just kidding. Pardon?
Yeah. So I could make sure I had the ring roll.
Session. Do we have anything coming out of executive session?
Mister Chairman, uh, we have nothing come out of executive session. We have nothing come out.
Okay. We need to, um, approve of that agenda, actual motion.
So moved, Mister Chair.
Any discussion? All in favor of the night to approve an exit agenda, please raise your hand. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, invocation. Media has been notified. Congratulations. So there will be a problem.
When nation, God is a...
Well, right. All right, Paul, again, you want to thank you guys. The acts that you've come into this... Right? That's me. Man. Uh, the purpose of this meeting this afternoon is to, uh, let Dr. Berg, uh, address what on what he sees as his vision and as interim superintendent, so I will turn this over to Dr. Berg.
Okay, that'll be fine. Uh, thank you. Last time we sat, I was a little more nervous than I am. And it was, tonight was, tonight's a lot better, a lot better. I enjoyed meeting with you last month. It was, uh, it was actually great fun for me. You gave me things to think about on the way home. I wish I could pronounce your last names a little better than I did. I worked on it a little bit. Um, I was mistaken on who the principal was and, and, uh, who the marine was, uh, and, and you're a former educator, um, and you were, you were right here. Mister, Mister Payne, you made a good point about this district's, um, uh, strategic plan. I had looked at it, but I honestly hadn't really studied it. When I got home, I went online and looked at it. Let me assure you, it's a very fine plan. The people that worked on that and who laid it out kinda knew what they were doing. And, uh, I, I wish I'd have, I'd have looked, checked it out more thoroughly before I started talking, but I, but you caused me to do a little bit of research. Um, I'm excited about being here. I expect to have some fun with you all. I mean, this is serious business that we do. It's vital to the county and to the twenty-two thousand kids that we've got. But we're adults, we oughta have some pleasure in our life. Working with the school board is one of the things that I like to do. So this is gonna be a fun trip for me. I'm gonna be sorry when the, when the year is up. I'm gonna wish I hadn't said to you, this is a one-year gig, but it's a one-year gig. We've got, we've got a job to do, we're gonna do it together, uh, but at the end of the road, we're gonna, we're gonna say we accomplished a lot of good things together. And, uh, it's a team game and we're gonna enjoy ourselves. Let me tell you what, uh, what I've been up to. I, I know I told you that when I, if, if I was selected, that I would make time to have a private interview with each of you. Come to your work or your office or your home or whatever and ask you about the school district, your work, what you think the issues are, what you think the solutions are, and that sort of thing. And when I get here in August, we'll get going on that, make an appointment and do that all, all professionally. But one of the things I like to do when I'm coming into a job is talk to about thirty people who are sometimes parents, sometimes teachers, sometimes in the community, sometimes elected people, and sometimes people who just wanna talk to me. And yesterday and today, I've had a marvelous, marvelous time. You will know, I imagine, most of these people, uh, from our staff, Alice Walton, Tanya Crosby, uh, Jim Foster have been generous with their time with me, uh, mostly today, uh, going over their professional jobs, what they do, what they see are things that need to be improved or how they can get better, what they want me to do for them. I mean, it's, it was a wonderful, uh, session. I made pages of notes with each of them and, uh, I came away with some respect for their work and understand the challenges that they face and I'll try to be a good superintendent. Um, I met, uh, yesterday morning with Jeff Bradley, the chairman of the legislation, uh, legislative delegation. Um, we had a good talk about the relationship between the school board and the county and he kinda laid out how the various, um, senators and, and representatives fit into the district, who has part of us and who has all of us. I, I can't say that I could remember it all, 'cause it's, there's a lot of people who represent us around here. We're trying to figure out how that all plays out. I know you have a legislative representative on the board and as we kinda work this year, I'll, I'll get better at it and we'll see how we, how all that plays out. But Mister Bradley was wonderful and generously, uh, gave of his time. As we walked out of his office, his administrative aide or a person who handles the front desk wanted to say hello and say hello to the new superintendent, nice, nice, uh, young lady and she had two kids, so I got out my pen and my pad and I said, "Well, tell me about this. What, where do your kids go to school? What do you like and what's good about the school? Which, how can we be better?" And she got a page and a half of things before I could get out the door. From a parent's perspective, probably in her whole life, she'll never run into a school superintendent. But, uh, I think she felt good and I felt better. Um, I met with Jim Tanner, uh, the sheriff this morning, went down to the sheriff, he offered to put me in jail if, oh, if I wanted that experience. And, uh, it was really interesting. If you remember in our, our interview time, I, I said that school security is, in this day and age, really the most important first thing you do. It used to be you'd talk about educating kids and all of that sort of thing. But in the environment right now, you've gotta, you've gotta guarantee security before you can go to that teaching thing. And that's why I met with the sheriff this morning, uh, to talk to him about what he, where he is, what training he's done, what kinda work they've done, how we can get better. He brought in, um, uh, Leg...
Given.
Alfredo?
Alfredo Given.
Alfredo Given, Gibbons. Anyway, he's the head of the, uh, SROs for the county. And so the three of us sat and talked about what, what the SROs think, what feedback is from those people, what the risk is, um, what, what, um, they need from the school district, how we can be better clients of theirs. Um, I didn't really know enough to kinda come back and say, "Here's what we know from you." They clearly had a, a wish list for me. Um, but I, but I think it was a really important symbolic thing for me to do. It emphasizes the priority of security of our kids and our buildings and the like. It sets a kind of, hopefully, a nice relationship with the sheriff. And he, he asked me a, a question, uh, that I came back with and I, and he, and it had, the answer, the answer to the question was, "Mister Tanner, um, nineteen years as a sheriff, when's the last time the superintendent's ever been in your office? You, first time, today." And that's a remarkable statement, but it's probably in the old days where safety wasn't as important as is now. I think the responsible thing is to be with the, the police officers and try to help them the best you can. I met this afternoon with Paul Somerville, the chairman of the county council, uh, talked about his experience and gave, gave me advice. Um, and then tomorrow, a gentleman I, I don't know, Carlton Dallas or Dulles?
Dallas.
Dallas. Um, he called and wanted to talk to me and I was looking for one more name to talk to, so, uh, he'll, I'll probably finish up my visit with him tomorrow and see what he has to say. But let me then finish with these interviews and, and tell you the most emotional thing of all. I met with two teachers, one yesterday and one today. It is, it is really something to talk to a teacher and for the teacher to talk to the superintendent and the superintendent says, "How can we get better? And what do we have to do as an institution to be a better employer, a better place to work, to recruit people? How can, how can we be a better place?" And, um, one of these teachers cried. And I, ooh. "We have a little work we could do and I'm committed to doing that for you." When I, when I get back here in, in late July and then August and September, I'll work to get my thirty interviews in. When I have it all together, we'll talk about it and tell you what generally people have advised me. And it's, you know, it's not all good, not everybody knows everything. They're not always wrong, but you have to listen to them anyway and do what you can do. And, uh, I'll, I'll give you a report and we'll talk about how we, how we use that information to move forward. Um, one of the, one of the important things that, that we have to do together, at least in, in my view of this, I, I told a couple of people this, I really have one job. That's to help you get ready to hire a new superintendent, a permanent superintendent. That really is my job. Make sure the thing runs right, the kids get a good education, we don't miss anything, we make some improvements, uh, we, we do things right. But at the end of the day, if I've, if I've earned my money, my keep and my title, I've helped you get ready to hire a superintendent. Right, right now, it might be awkward. It might, it might be, it might be difficult. But by springtime, by springtime, we wanna be in a place where you all have a, a choice of three or four really good people who will wanna come here, who'll wanna work with you, they'll see what a great team you are, how much fun it can be to, in this school district. And I'll feel good about what I helped you get to. That's what I want. Um, and I know we'll, we'll work on that together. There's, there, there will be times, I suppose, when we might possibly disagree. I wouldn't be surprised at that. But if it happens, it happens. We're all adults and I think we can work. Um, I've had two great days. Tomorrow, I go try to find a place to live. I think, I think you might have a lead here. Um, but we'll, we'll see about that. Um, if anytime you need something, you want help, I'm certainly available. When I get here, we need to talk about some things about more detail and communication and all that. We'll, we'll, we will, we will worry about that when I get back. That, that'll all, that'll all wait. Um, anything you wanna know? Anything I oughta do for you? Have at it. Yes, sir.
Thank you. That was, um, very reassuring. Your huge value to me is that you're a new set of eyes. You, you, you come in and you, and you look at everything fresh. And, uh, I can see you've already started doing that and I appreciate that. But when you talk about positioning us, you know, to get a permanent superintendent, which is the prize, we know that. Um, what do you mean? I mean, make our, sure our vision is right, make sure our culture is, you know, there's, I, I know you're thinking about some stuff, but I, I'm trying to pull it out of you.
Well, you just think about the job market. Really good superintendents are hard to find. I mean, there's lots of people floating around and, and, you know, you can have applicants everywhere, so that's, that's not the issue. What you're after are some really good people. And they will look at your school district by how it's, how the finances are, how the personnel shop works, how the public relations are, how that bond issue goes or doesn't go, how you all get along. You know, all of that, all of that mix comes together. When I was, when I was, in the thirty-seven years I was a superintendent and time for me to look around, I researched the district before I would ever call or send a letter in or do anything. I, I made sure that I did my due diligence before I went after a job. And that's what really good superintendents do. And they will look into the district and they don't just look at a salary and compensation, that's gonna be the, what it is, but the work life you're gonna have, kinda how you're gonna spend sixty hours a week makes a difference to good superintendents. So you wanna, you wanna be a, kinda have the optics of attracting that kinda person. And I, and I wanna help you do that. Um, I think that would, that's, I think, the job focus here for a while. There's more to that, of course, but we'll talk later.
Dr. Berg. Oh. Dr. Berg, you said you had a chance to look at or peruse the strategic plan.
Yes, sir.
What area of the plan stood out to you as far as being, that you want to focus on, or do you feel is, it covers all bases, or is there a focus that you feel that you need to work on or get involved more in?
Mister Payne, I, I don't really, I didn't look at it quite like that. I mean, you, you look at a strategic plan and you, you remember that there's really hundreds of people that have put their time and effort into the building of that thing. So it re, it does, it does generally reflect the consensus of group and the community that, that plan, uh, is, is written for. The thing that was, and I'm not sure who did this, but when you look at your agenda tonight, the strategic plan is on that agenda. I mean, somebody's thought through, these meetings tonight are part of the plan of the school district. I've never seen that before. That's probably a technical thing more than it is a, you know, visionary thing, but I've never seen it before in my life. So I, it, I think it's impressive.
Smalls.
Hello, Dr. Berg. And, um, I'm glad that you took the time to look around Beaufort and look at the different and spoke to the different entities that are here in top-level positions. One of the things that I was very impressed with when, uh, during the interview was that you noticed that Beaufort County is not only a very big district with twenty-two thousand students, but that Beaufort County is very diverse.
Very diverse, yes, it is.
And that's, that was important to me, to realize that Beaufort County is very diverse. Beaufort County is also, uh, in my opinion, one of the best counties in the state that's really doing great things with these twenty-two thousand students. I'm glad that you took on the challenge to make sure that we maintain that high standard and to go further. I also thank you for taking it upon yourself to help us find a permanent superintendent. So I do thank you for that.
Thank you.
And I think that, um, Beaufort County is very fortunate to have selected you, uh, Dr. Berg, and that you are taking the time to read over our strategic plans and, um, talking to our teachers, because they're the ones that's out in front and that would need all of the assistance that we can give them as a board. So thank you very much. Welcome to Beaufort County.
Thank you. We're gonna have fun. We're gonna have fun. Wait a minute, I'm, I'm being interviewed again. While you were in executive session, while you were in executive session, the, one of the television stations in Savannah interviewed me up here. And the, the, the person who asked the question, um, sort of implied that I was here on like cruise control and maintain and don't do anything and relax and all that sort of stuff. And I said, "Wait a minute, that's not what this job is all about. I'm getting paid to run the school district, to manage the place and to see to it that twenty-two thousand kids don't miss a school year. And that little third grader only has one chance to be a third grader and if it's during my year, I'm gonna see to it that she has a good experience." Now, I, I don't want... It's a reporter, right? I'm sorry.
Ms. Oreschak.
Um, Dr. Berg, um, as an interim superintendent, to what extent, um, will you exercise your, um, abilities to managing personnel, staffing? We're in the people business, it makes up the largest part of our budget. Tell us about your thoughts there.
It's, it's a little bit of a curtain dance. You have a superintendent, I said in the interview, there's only one superintendent at a time. When I was here these last two days and tomorrow, I try to be respectful of the superintendent, not the superintendent. So you, you can't, you gotta be, you gotta be sensitive to that. Um, Dr. Moss talked to me about a couple of positions, but I thought, but thought that sort of thing. So, you know, there's no straight line. On, on August one, I'll, I'll be in charge, I'll run it, I'll manage it, I'll do it all right. Right now, it's not quite that. So I don't mean to be...
I understand that this period that we're in right now through the end of July, um, you have two, two men somewhat, well, one man at the helm and one on his way in. But when you, uh, sit down, um, as the only superintendent, will you feel free to make the same decisions as a long-term superintendent in that short term while you're here? How, how will that work? If you see changes, um, that might better our district in regard to structuring, uh, central office or if... I, I'd like to know some of your thoughts and I know probably some of our community members would like to know that as well.
Um, I, I haven't been focusing on organizational structure right now. Just, just, I haven't had time to do that. Um, we get into the September or something, I will have some time and I will put some effort on it. But where the, where the personnel is concerned, you have a really fine personnel director and she recruits for you, she tries to find the best people in the state that will come here. We've gotta try to make sure our salaries, our benefits, the working conditions are such that people wanna come here and to support the work that she and the department does. At the level where the superintendent has more input into assistance and that kind of thing, I have very high standards for performance. I want, I want first-class quality people that, to work for me and work for the school district. As we get into kind of February, March, April in that period, and there's another, uh, interim superintendent around, I will make sure that I work with that person, he or she and I. If there are important staff positions, I will consult with that person to make sure that, that, because they're gonna live with him for ten years maybe. So, uh, even though I might have a view on a higher, I will be careful in the spring to consult with your selection. And your superintendent has a, has a hand in it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
I, um, I was, I was glad to hear you say that you spoke to a couple of teachers and, um, I personally have a very high standard of where, um, I think morale should be. So I was wondering if you could offer any feedback of what, about what you heard. Um, I'm not sure if you would feel comfortable with that right now, but, um, I was wondering if you could offer some feedback and if not, I, I am looking forward to really hearing more about that. Um, and, and then the second thing is, is I'm really, um, interested in hearing how you're gonna work to keep us very student-focused.
Um, I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the teachers.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't, I don't, I'm not, I'm not trying to withhold information.
I understand. It was only two people and so I, I understand that.
There's seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred others I need to talk to.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, on the standard issue?
Um, oh, my question was, is, um, I'm looking, I, I'm, I wanna hear about how you will help us to stay very student-focused so that we can, uh, continue to work on keeping our students moving forward in a, in a very targeted way.
You may have given me a tough question. Well, our job is to take care of twenty-two thousand kids. That's the main job of this place. And with our faculty, staff and, and whatever, everything is about the kids. I, that's kind of a cliche these days, I don't mean to overdo that, but, um, allow, allow me to think about that, will you please?
I, I happen to agree, we wouldn't be in business without the kids.
Okay, Mr. Dowling.
I just wanna also, also welcome you, but I, I wanna tell you how much I connect with your concern about how we are as an employer. It's very high priority for me that we, uh, become the best employer in the county, not just in size, but in the fact that people really feel valued and want to come to work in them, in whatever they do, whatever they do for us, each and every employee. If we can become the best employer in the county, we'll achieve even greater heights academically.
That's right. I believe that's right, John. I believe that's right. We get the, we get the, the, the student and the employee thing right, rest of it's kind of falls into place. Yep.
Ms. Oreschak.
Dr. Berg, um, when you're on, uh, when your turn begins, um, what will be your primary means of communication with the board in between board meetings? We are a large board, probably one of the larger ones you've worked with, so it is a bit of a challenge for you.
On earth, right? I, I've talked a bit with, with, with Jim, the, the public information person, I've talked with Robin about how she does it. Here's the, here's the, here's the problem with me. It's never gonna be good enough. No matter what you do, it's, it's just, there's so many... No matter what you do, it's, it's just, there's so many loopholes in it. You just, you work at it, you work at it, you work at it, but you never, but it's one of those things that's just, it's painful to say. We'll try not to surprise you. Well, if something happens in the district that's important, we'll try to get it to you. We'll try to communicate with, with the telephone and the computer and, and all of that sort of thing. And you also have to, have to help me. There are, let's see, twenty-two ears at this table, and I've only got two of them, or there's twenty-four ears at this table, and I've only got two of them. So you hear more than I do. You ought to know more about things than I'd ever be able to know. So, that communication thing has to come to me too. Don't, don't leave me out of the mix, 'cause I can't fix a problem I don't know about. So, let, 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 let me do this. When we get to September and it kind of settles out a little bit, let's spend one of those COW meetings called...
Committee of the Whole.
COW.
COW.
COW?
Committee of the Whole.
One of those, one of those, those nights, let's, let's put this communication thing on the agenda and let's talk about it. And I'd like to hear what you expect, like to hear what you, you want, see if we can do it. But I, I know, I know when it comes to June 30th, it'll, it'll be a fair, 'cause some things happen and, and the ball gets dropped someplace, not intentionally, it just happens. It's a, it's a frustration to me, actually.
Ms. Coltrane?
I do say, also say welcome and glad to, looking forward to your arrival, and I guess my, I'm gonna save my individual issues that I would like to raise with you for my one-on-one meeting, but...
All right.
I'm gonna ask if there are, is there anything that you now need to know from us before you get here, or anything we can do to help make your transition here on August one better?
Thank you, thank you. I think you're all great people. I think we're gonna get along, it's gonna be, it'll be a fun, fun year. Superintendents are humans, and, and things happen that you wish didn't, you make mistakes, and you wish, you wish you hadn't done it, but it just happens. So maybe a little bit of forgiveness when I make the first blunder? Yeah, how could you do that?
Surely you'll have a little honeymoon period.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have maybe eleven months of honeymoon.
Gotcha.
No, no, this is not, this is not a short honeymoon, this baby's an eleven-month deal.
Dr. Berg, how do you feel about, this is, it's hard not to ask this in a clumsy way because it's so easy to have platitudes in, in the discussion, but how do you feel about public's access to information about how the district's being run? And also, members of the Board of Education's access to the information about how the district's being run?
John, that's, that's real easy. That is real easy. This is a public institution. The public has a right to everything they wanna know. There are some personnel things where the Board of Education gets involved, where you have to restrict some access to information. But in the main, these are public schools run with public dollars, and they ought to be run in an open, public way. I, where I live in Alexandria, I used to be the superintendent. It irritates me when I can't get information from my old school district. They withhold stuff from me. And, actually, I know why you get around that stuff, that, that block business, but I find it offensive. I'm paying for those schools, I ran the darn thing, and you won't tell me what I, what I wanna know? Not during the next year. And nobody, nobody should do that. But by the way, that applies to the county and the city and the other public institutions in Beaufort County or anyplace else. Blue Cross can withhold everything they want, but a public institution cannot do that and should not do it, and that ought to be, ought not to be.
Dr. Berg, I'm just gonna piggyback a little in regard to Ms. Anderson and her questions in regard to teachers.
Yes.
We do have an established teacher forum in the county. Think about how you're going to work with that teacher forum. I think it's a very good feedback from teachers to you in regard to how they feel, programs that they may be thinking about negatively and positively, and the education of the students. So when you have time, not tonight, I know, but think about how you're going to work with the teacher forum. I think that's a very valuable organization in this county, and we have teachers who work hard, who have worked hard to keep that teacher forum up and running on a regular basis. So just think, look into it, think about how you're going to interact with the teachers and what you can do to support the teacher forum.
Mr. Payne, I, before I came to South Carolina, I had not been exposed to the, the teacher forum thing, how, Virginia doesn't have it, and the state of Washington doesn't have it. What they have in place are teacher unions. And that's a totally different animal than the South Carolina teacher forum. And what I, what I, I learned at Routh-Cushaw and Lexington is they are a tremendous asset. They really are, and I, I, that model could be played out in lots and lots of places as a substitute for what at least Washington State has, that's for sure. I will, I know I'll be involved, I expect to go to the meetings, I expect to participate in what they do, and they'll have my help to, on the projects that they choose to try to carry out. Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Horshack?
I'm not sure how much to delve into the minutia tonight versus the COW meeting, where you suggest we really bring forward more specifics, but I'll, I'll throw this out there. My, my question is regarding communication once again. So, how do you view the officers? Do you view officers of the board as liaisons to, between you and the rest of the board? What is your understanding of the role of the officers and, and how they play into the communication between you and the board as a whole?
That, we need to work a little bit together to see how that's gonna play out. I know the, I guess, I know who the president is. I guess by way, maybe you're the vice president? I don't know that.
Vice chair.
Okay, vice.
I'm four secretaries.
Okay. I guess maybe because where you are at the dais makes that up. So that's how little I know about it, right there. It depends on how you like to work, actually, not, not, not me. If you like to work through your officers, then I'll respond to work through the officers. If you like the committee of the whole thing, then I can adjust to that as well. Let me say that there's some advantage, there's two, there's two, anything's gotta provide. But let me do it, the officer has first access. I think we plan the board meetings together, don't we?
Yes.
Okay. So in, in, just in that meeting, all of a sudden, the officers have more information. They have it first. They give me advice on what's good and bad and is, so they give, they have first shot just in, by the nature of jobs they hold. You know, we, I suppose you could sit with eleven people and plan a board meeting. I honestly, we, we don't wanna do that, and you don't wanna do that. Do you, do they run the district and run the board? No, that, I don't, I can't imagine that's how they think. So you can come back to the whole group, you get back with the whole board. I, I just, I don't know how you operate, that's kind of off the top of my head and what I think.
Well, give us some examples of other boards you've worked with and how, you know, are there any patterns that you've observed with boards?
Sure, yeah, that is easy. First of all, when you've got eleven, there's probably a case to be made for officers, that's for sure. When you have five board members, which, in a lot of places, the officer thing is almost nonexistent, the president for sure, but you don't have a vice president. With nine, what, how do we, I've... We did, with, up at, up at Lexington, if I had nine board members, there were three, we met, planned board meetings. The other board members, they kind of, they kind of rotated the officers thing so that everybody had a chance that, that you didn't, you didn't have a four-year president or anything, you have a one-year president, and so it was a training thing, and they got, they got, they have the fun of meeting with me every month to talk about those board I, I, I guess my, with about eleven, you gotta have officers, gotta have a little more information. I don't think, I don't think it's intentional, I just think it's in nature.
Understand, thank you.
Mr. Dowling?
One of the good things about your experience is that you don't have any learning curve about the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Could you help us understand what your view about the relationship between the Freedom of Information Act and the use of executive sessions by the board?
John, let me break that into two parts. That's the FOIA thing and then the executive session thing. Even though I just said this public information, you have to be open about it, there's also a drain on time and staff to get that stuff together. It depends on what the environment is. I don't, I don't know if you have a lot of FOIA requests here or not. They, they take time, they have to be processed, they have to be checked, they have to make sure that things are right when it goes out. You just don't photocopy pages and send it, it's a little, it's more complicated than that. But you have to, you have to try to reply, respond and reply in a, in a reasonably, reasonable period of time. And what is that? You know, now if you got, if you get, how many FOIA do you get? Tell me that.
We don't get them. They go to a, a staff member.
Okay. I mean, if you've got hundreds of them, then, then you, that's a real management issue just to, just to deliver those things. The board in executive session is a different matter. Now, I don't think anybody said they were a lawyer here, but, so, so we're all non-lawyers.
I'm not, they know I'm not, they tell me that all the time.
That you're not a lawyer?
Joey Dunkle, not an attorney, just have common sense.
Herb Berg, not an attorney, no sense. The South Carolina FOIA allows school boards and other public agencies to go into executive session to discuss matters that should be held private, generally they're about personnel, that the chairman, before you go into a session, has to announce it, you have to vote to go in, at the end of the thing, you have to vote that what you covered is what you said you were gonna do, and you didn't violate any laws. Now, I'm assuming that that's what you do. Any, any attorney would sort of advise that. But I think it's incumbent on two people to make sure that the board does it right. The first is the chairman. It's the chairman's job to see to it that that FOIA law is properly followed and there aren't any, any mistakes in it. The other one is your superintendent. One of my jobs is that when you get into a discussion on something and you kind of get off track and get up against the boundary, I need to tell you, hold on here. And I will do that. It's against the law, and I'm in there, and I'm gonna try to not let you do anything that's illegal. And that, that can be a little dicey, actually, but, yes, sir.
I have a follow-up, if I may. Are you gonna be, will you be willing, and when we have the quite frequent situation where we may or may not choice to go into executive session? Because the law says you may.
Yeah.
And it doesn't really require it under most circumstances. Are you willing to offer your advice to us about, well, yeah, I know you can go into executive session, but you might wanna think about not doing it? Does that make sense?
It, 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 it does, and it, it has to do with the nature of the topic and the subject you're gonna get into. If you're dealing with, with, with kids by name, or teachers by name, or employees by name, you gotta, you can't do that. And then there's, there's a whole list in the, in the state law of things you can talk As, as comfortable as I am with it, I probably need an hour with a good non-lawyer, John, uh, Joe, I mean. Joe, you need to give me an hour on this FOIA thing. You don't, you don't want, the press is gonna eat you alive if you violate that thing. You don't want that. We're trying, we're trying to do it right, honest and upright. So why would we do things that were marginal?
And last but not least, regarding FOIA requests?
Yep.
I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but is it fair to say that the more information the district publishes regularly, actually cuts down on the amount of FOIA requests? The demand for information drives the number.
Generally, generally, it reduces the amount of FOIAs, generally. And, and I know the staff member, I can see her around this corner, I don't want you to get into this conversation, okay? But I wish I would've asked you this today when we were talking, more detail about FOIA, if I'd have realized we were gonna get into it, I'd actually have better facts. I don't have it, so, when I get back, we'll talk about it, okay?
Ms. Horshack?
I know the public is anxious to meet you, Dr. Berg. What will your schedule look like in meeting with the public over the next, well, when you come on board in August?
Well, I, I think you asked me the question about how I was gonna get involved in the community at that interview time, and I, my answer was, this is a big county, it's gonna be a big job. I, I intend to be on the floor, to be visible, to be engaged. People ask me to come to them, to go, to talk to them, to talk, come and sit and listen to them, I'll sit and listen. I will work on that. I think the sheriff told me we had a hundred and eighty thousand beds. Never heard that expression, but a hundred and eighty thousand people who sleep in Beaufort County every night, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand people are here during the daytime. So I can't mean to blow them away, but I will work at it. Hell, I'm a person, a fantastic person. I thrive on that. I'll work on it.
Wonderful, thank you.
And I'm gonna see you, and besides asking the questions, what are we doing right? What are we doing wrong? How can we fix it together? Give me three people to go see. So, this eleven turns into thirty-eight for too long. By the way, we're, I know we're getting at the end of this, there's a lot of conversation about the interview superintendents publicly Friday. This is about as close as you get to a public, this is about as close as you get to the public interview, actually. Let me tell you the problem with it. If you were gonna interview publicly, I wouldn't apply for your job. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do this as a candidate. I'm telling you what I think. Absolutely, you're getting squared deal from me. And not that you don't do that in an executive interview, but it's a different environment. So, when we get to springtime, I know you're gonna ask about that, and you're gonna have opinions on it, you might even disagree with what I just said. But I'm telling you, I would not interview. In Florida, there, I was offered a, really a great opportunity. Florida's got this open interview business. I wouldn't take the interview. I was in a great job, and I loved what I did, but if I went down to that interview, cameras, the TV, and the press are out there, and everybody in my school district would know about it, and I wasn't, I mean, I would look at it, just maybe it was, could've been a good job, but I didn't wanna put my life on the line. been a good job, but I didn't want to put my life on the line. So, this is, this is how public interviews go, but there's a different kind of person applies for those things, and it was never going to be me.
Yes, ma'am.
A follow-up question. Do you feel the same way if you have already been identified as one of two finalists?
No, no. When you, when you go.
You're talking about initial interviews.
That's right.
Thank you. That was a clarification we needed to make there.
Okay, I'm, I, I didn't mean not to say that, but, no, no. Once you get to be the final two or three, then all, everything's over with.
Very good, thank you.
Everything's, everything's probably can, that's, that's just part of the thing.
Thank you.
It's very risky, by the way, for a superintendent to, a sitting superintendent, who's doing a good job, likes where they are, to even explore a job, because your board likes you. They think you're doing a good job, they want to keep you around and keep you happy. And when you go, and, and when you, when you say, well, we'll, I'll just talk to them, you kind of break a little bond with the people who like you. And I, I hated it, I hated it. I didn't want, I wanted to be good to my board, but it was time for me professionally to do something. And I'm, it's, it's, it's a, I, not everybody has the same feeling. But I liked the boards I worked with, appreciated them, and I didn't want to hurt them. And that's why I'm going to help you this spring, get us a good superintendent. And Earl, can you not ask me one question?
Well, the reason I'm going to ask you a question is because we had a, a really, I would say, good dialogue today, and I, I really was impressed by the comments you made, and you, you would listen to, to my concerns, and so, I'm just glad that you're here. And like you said, anytime that you can call on me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I want to be a good superintendent, I want to have, I want us, I want us to make progress, I want us to do things right for our kids, and at the end of the day, we have a, kind of a little party and say, what a year it was.
Okay, okay. Nothing else? We all adjourn.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.